Begin with prayer. Councilor.
Your Father in Heaven, thank you for all our daily blessings. Thank you for our health, safety, and the love of our families. We ask you to watch over and comfort all in the wake of the recent storms and tornadoes. Thank you for our first responders, safety personnel, and their families for showing us, showing up to help us in our emergencies. Please keep them safe and healthy. Thank you for all who are working for peace in the world. Blessed are the peacemakers. We ask all this through the intercession of the Blessed Virgin Mary and your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll begin to order. We have a roll call.
Callers.
Present.
Allen.
Present.
Oseltine.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Pam Peter.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Young. Cora.
Entertain motion to adopt. Steve Dinda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Misleadingness items. We have an assessment on Steamboat Arabia from staff. Mr. Crane?
Yes, thank you. Staff met a couple times on the Steamboat Arabia feasibility, and after reviewing the information that was provided and the timelines that were needed, we came up with estimated total project cost of 65 to 80 million. Most of that is construction and exhibit space, and then the estimated cost for the collection and the relocation was 15 to 20 million. We heard earlier on in the presentation that was made to the council that there was a potential of revenue from a casino fee, and we put that in as an identified revenue stream, not knowing if that was ever going to be available or not. But with that being the only identified revenue stream and not having any public grants secured and not having any private funds received, there was a substantial gap. And when we took into account the estimated revenue from ticket sales at the event, it would have been less than $2 million per year in revenue for a project that would have cost 3 to 5 million dollars a year in debt service. So due to those, that funding gap and that revenue projection, at this time, you know, we just didn't see an opportunity for us to come up with a feasible project. If something changed and there was some identified public funding that became available or some type of philanthropic commitment, that could obviously change the discussion. We did think that potentially it would be a good fit at MSP if any of those things ever did happen, and there might be some applicable tax incentive forms that could be provided to that through the project generation of taxes at the site. So our recommendation is that there's nothing really to proceed on yet, other than waiting to see if there's some additional opportunities available.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a discussion or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Thank you. Just a quick question for Mr. Crane. Did the, did he obtain this study from the other community?
No.
Would that help the assessment, or would the assessment change?
It's hard to tell without seeing it in the, if you're talking about the Marshall feasibility study.
Right.
Yeah, they wouldn't provide it to us. It was a private document from a private organization, I think, in Marshall or the county, I think. We did try to get it. Yeah, we didn't, we couldn't evaluate it since we didn't have it, so it was hard to tell if that would have helped us. I know that was part of a project for them.
Okay. And then did our, you know, we give substantial amount of money to the J.C. Repping for economic development activities, did they have an opportunity to take a look at feasibility?
Yeah, they were part of our feasibility assessment team.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Opportunity for public comment. Mr. Pretty. Welcome.
Thank you.
Say your name and address.
I'm Bob Pretty. I live in Jefferson City. I want to thank the council for taking a look at this issue. I want to thank you for voting to do that. I'm not surprised throughout this process, I kind of decided that I would consider myself cautiously pessimistic, but I realized that the city has some very high priorities right now, especially with the convention center, and so making this fit with the financial issues that we have with that would be difficult for people to take and run with for the city. And I want you to know how grateful I am that you stepped, did this, because in the seven years I've been working on this, this is the first time that anybody at the state or the city level has at least gone so far as to look into this and the practicality of it. I'm still convinced this will be a great thing for our city. What would help us now is, well, I talked to Dave Hawley, I emailed Dave Hawley Sunday night after I saw the newspaper article, and he did too, and he was a little bit down on that, and I said, "Look, first of all, understand, this is the first time anybody's done anything at all, and they are saying that if we raise some money, then the city council might take another look at this in terms of property for the location of the museum and some tax help." So I don't consider this as being closing the door entirely. This says that we need to go out and do some work, and I plan on doing that. What would be helpful is if the city were to give us a target number. It's kind of hard to go out, and as some of you might know, it's kind of hard to go out and ask people to donate for something if you don't know how much you need. So if we're able to work with some people who have a record of making financial contributions, and they ask us how much we want, it would be helpful if we were able to tell them, "Well, the city says we need X amount before the city can go forward," or if I go to some state agencies and talk to them, they have already said, economic development has already said, "The city has to make the first move." I don't know whether this offer of land eventually and tax breaks eventually is considered a first move, but certainly it's a step. And if you could give us some specific numbers that we can shoot for before we go out and talk to some other people, I would certainly appreciate that. I was kind of disappointed that neither Dave Hawley nor I was asked to meet with the people who were doing the study. Disappointed that the only legislation that they looked at was one that was, was a bill that was introduced in 2018. There have been other bills that have been introduced, but it's academic anyway, because the casinos have kept any bills from being passed that would have provided the money for this project from the casino industry, even though the casino industry is here, largely because it relied on our Steamboat Heritage to get permission from orders to operate here. So we're going to have to go outside, we're going to have to continue to build opportunities. I have a meeting with the president of the University of Missouri early next month to talk about possible academic value of this project and see where we can go with that. I'm going to also try to meet with the president at Lincoln and with State Tech and explore academic links there, which I think will then strengthen our ability to go out and talk to other people. I'm hoping that we'll see some enthusiasm from some of the people in this town who are known for their philanthropic work. I'd be glad to talk to any of them at any time, and we'll see how far we can go. But I want to thank, I want to thank the mayor and the city manager and the city council for at least doing this much, this part. And now we have an idea of what we need to do, and if we can get more specific numbers, some target numbers, that will be very helpful, too. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm aware of the competition for dollars in the city right now for projects, and we're going to still go ahead and do what we can. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the study that you did.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask Mr. Pretty, if with the museum in Kansas City, I know that you said the lease is running out, are they going to be allowed to stay there on a month over that basis beyond, under the lease, or do you know?
I talked to Dave Hawley about that. I think he told me some time ago that the city has offered to let them stay there at three times the rent they're paying now. In our discussions, obviously, a building cannot be built and ready for them to move into as soon as their lease runs out, and so Dave's head, if necessary, he would store the collection. And so as in our communications, I said, "Well, you know, the best place to store the material is right there in the museum if you want to go ahead and continue to rent on a monthly basis." So that's, that's a situation that depends on what the city would like to do. But otherwise, if it looks like we're making some progress, then the other offers that are out there from St. Charles or from Ludworth, Kansas, or from the museum in Pittsburgh, we're getting somewhere, he doesn't have to take those right away, and he can find a place to store this material one way or another. I did, I did convince him that the price that he shot us of 17 to 20 million would include the cost of moving. So that, I don't, because you just don't back up a U-Haul truck to the door and start throwing those things at the truck. So there's flexibility, it's, the whole thing is kind of liquid right now, and it just depends on where we go from here. So I still have my fingers crossed, because I think it would be an incredible thing for our city to have. And I don't know about the 60 to 80 million dollar figure. I have some questions about that, but again, because I don't know how that was calculated. So if we could get more specifics about all this, we'd be glad to sit down with anybody in the city or anybody elsewhere and talk about how we can go about things. I personally don't have, well, I don't play, I don't play in the same league a lot of people do in this town who have much more money than I have, who have the capacity of helping out a project like this that will mean so much to our town. But I'm hoping that somehow we'll get together and be able to do some things with some local contributions, and then expand that out to get something even more major. I still have hopes for having this museum here. I still have hopes for keeping it in Missouri somewhere. All this means right now is we just have to work harder, we just have to be more creative, and this, this gives us something that we can talk to people about. It might not seem like much to you, but it's, it's so much more than what we've ever had before, especially if we can get some target number.
Wouldn't it be helpful, Mr. Pretty, if staff were to kind of help you out with detailed calculation or how they arrived at a number? Would that do anything for you at this point?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see that. As I said, I wish we could have sat down and worked with them when they were breaking up these numbers, so they had an understanding of some things and we had a better understanding of some things. So if, if the staff wants to sit down with us, I can get Dave on the telephone or maybe even bring him in, and we'll, we'll be glad to talk to anybody about this. We just need to have a better understanding of where we are, and then we can move forward.
Any other questions?
Do we need direction from council to get Mr. Pretty a fundraising goal? Or is that, so if they pursue like private funding, would we be able to give them a number?
I mean, I guess you're saying if the council's willing to fund some portion of it, and if he comes up with the rest, or he's got to come up with 100%, is that kind of what you're?
Well, he was asking if, if they went to seek funding, how much would they be asking for? So I guess as it stands right now, would, would that be essentially all of it?
Yes.
I mean, just off of this feasibility study, it looks like to me it would be the funding gap of 60 million plus. And I mean, just going off the numbers, I don't know exactly where they got them from either, but I do know in the conversation that you, or your presentation, I mean, you did, if I remember right, it was, you were telling us 50 million dollars for the construction of five acre, I think it was five acre site.
Yeah, it was.
And then the price for the collection and relocation came from you as well, so.
Right, well, I, the price, what they're talking about here is, we know the price that the museum would like to have, 17 to 20 million. And as I mentioned, that would include the cost of moving. Then when Marshall, a few years ago, had its feasibility study then, the feasibility study talked of a 35 million dollar building on eight acres of land. Now, I don't know whether that price included the land or whether that was just for the building. Now, we all know what's happened to construction costs since then. So I'm thinking it's probably more in the line of 40 to 45 million for a building. But I don't, it depends on what, what the architects show. We don't, we don't have any detailed architectural work. So, but I think 60 million probably is fairly reasonable. I'm not sure about 80.
Well, so the 80 came from, if you take the construction costs of 50 to 60, plus the collection and relocation of 15 to 20, that's where the 80 million came from.
My figures are based on 20 being, 17 to 20 being part of the 60. That's where I was coming from. But again, this is all speculation at this point. We're, we're trying to figure out exactly where to go and how much.
I would just say our, our construction and exhibit space line item came from readily available newspaper articles talking about the cost, because this has been pitched in a lot of different towns. So there was a lot of information ready, readily available, about what people thought the cost was. Then we took an internal cost estimate based on the square footage price, on what we thought it would take to build a museum-quality HVAC-controlled, entity-controlled space, and that's how we came up with that number. And I can't remember what the dollar number was per square foot, but that's how we calculated. So we said, "Are we in the ballpark with what we've seen publicly and what we know, we think the price per square foot would be to build museum-quality space?"
Could I get a, could I get a copy of that breakout?
I don't, I don't know if there's a copy of anything. I think there was a, it's going to be a square footage price, so I think you can back off, you can take the 70,000 square foot number and do the math.
I'd just like to see some kind of a written document that shows how this is all calculated, so that I could work from that if I could possibly.
So if you take 50 million and divide that by 70,000 square foot space, then you'll come up with a per foot price, and that's what we use.
Well, anything you can give me in writing would be helpful for us as we go forward with this.
Just one additional thought. You know, a project like this, when you talk about the fees that people come and see the exhibit, what they pay, I think they pay 17 dollars per right now. So a good way to look at it, to me, would be was if you bond it, borrow the money, and whatever that number is that you use for, for bond payment, to be able to operate it and repay the loan, whatever that number is, and the difference between what it costs to build it, that's the number we're looking for, to be honest. Because if, if it's, operationally, it's self-containable due to the entries and to pay the debt payment, or a portion of, a good portion of the debt payment, then the difference then becomes the number you're looking at, the way I look at it.
That's the kind of information I'd like to have. So if the city can come up with that kind of information, give us more detail that we can look at, and then plot a strategy after that, that would be helpful.
We were using 750 dollars a square foot.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. Public hearing, you know, 2025, six.
We're going to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map and zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 51.54 acres located in the 1200 block of Wildwood Drive from C1 Neighborhood Commercial and RA1 High Density Residential to PUD Plan Unit Development, approving a preliminary PUD plan and preliminary subdivision plat of Wildwood Estates.
That's, you'll be presenting?
Yes, so I'll kind of, kind of briefly go through this. I probably won't cover a lot of the things we touched on in the last meeting, just kind of hit maybe a little bit of new information I wanted to provide in the PowerPoint, which is rezoning into the PUD, and then essentially a site plan, a PUD plan for council approval. Again, just a little context there, included a little bit broader here view, really, of site in comparison to the Wildwood extension, to kind of give you an idea a little bit there of the scale of that property, and also kind of where it relates to that project. Talked a little bit about the, the kind of example elevations that developer provided for these townhome-style developments. Again, it's meant to be kind of ownership model, basically two-family attached or single-family attached type units. The, the two kind of really big components here is that they're requesting approval of private streets, and the code does allow for a, for a request for private streets within the development. Important things there is that the, the streets would be built to city street standards, but maintenance, future maintenance would be the responsibility of the HOA within the future. And we've had conversations with them about forming that HOA, making sure those provisions are included in the documentation, and I think they've already taken some of those steps, even though it's not really required until they come in with the final plans. The second portion of this, again, though, is that they are requesting to provide gates on the main entrances of Wildwood. So again, the highlighted areas there are the gate locations. And just before we move off this slide, just a few other things. Again, we talked about the PUD essentially is approving some deviations from the standard type of regulations when it comes to the private streets. There's a limit on 50 units per development, and also that, you know, it's some, it's a development generally needs to be isolated. So the point there is, you know, we, we're trying to limit the scope and scale of a private street development that might inhibit future growth with street connection. I think the developers really proposing here is that they're really landlocked to the north, there's no future development that's going to connect from that direction, and the other sites are really somewhat challenging as far as connection goes, and those properties do have connection to the other major roadways that are either existing or would be built in the future. So this is kind of their rendering, this isn't exactly what would be built, but essentially this is what you'd expect when you pull up as far as a gated entryway into the subdivision. And this is a little bit closer up view of those entrances. Again, here, you can see these would be the entrance, and there are standards for the design there. One of those is a turnaround that meets certain design specifications, and they're going to be required to work with the fire department to make sure the designs of those meet any type of fire department requirements, that they can turn around their vehicles in those locations. And also, all the other design requirements for lane width and other turnarounds are also met. This is a little additional information I wanted to provide as far as what standards we have if you were going to gate your community. So one of those is it has to swing open horizontally, has to be manned 24 hours a day or have some sort of access. It also has to allow other people to be able to access it, like the mailman and whatnot, not just emergency responders. Provisions also say that the city can remove the gate if it is a barrier to access at the expense of the association. So if in the future there's an issue, the city does have recourse to address that issue. Also, touched on this, the association documents, the HOA documents, have to basically contain these provisions in them, so they're, you know, future owners are aware that this is the maintenance requirement, and this is what rights the city has as far as the gate maintenance goes in the future. The final one I want to just touch on, basically the design of the entrances, gate houses, entrance lines, all that's going to be included in the final plat and the final PUD that come forward. Go through another public hearing and come back before city council again. So a vote tonight, if it was an approval vote, would essentially be laying the framework for the PUD and the layout and private streets and the gates. Essentially, if they come back and they are able to meet all the specifications and design elements within the code for the final, the expectation would be that it's consistent with the, so tonight you're essentially approving that PUD, kind of with those exceptions to the PUD, and with the acknowledgement that they're requesting private streets with those gated entrances. So with that, I know the applicant is here as well, if there's questions for them, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's go.
Does the privately owned street, would they also be responsible for snow removal, or would that be a function of the city to offer on the private street?
So I think that is something that would be included within the final documentation when it comes to the PUD. There's certain services, the code's very specific about, that won't be provided, such as kind of maintenance of the street, but it also, I think, envisions that there would be, within that final agreement with, with the developer, any other services that we need to basically address on how it's going to be handled will be clarified. That's something staff would look at, I think, once the preliminary is approved, we'd probably look at kind of finalizing what those services would be.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Mike. With, with the setting up of the HOA and all that, they, the list of the officers of this, when it becomes a private gated thing, that a copy stays with us for, and those people are the ones who we contact then, whatever, unless they, if there's emergencies or something, and what, it didn't work or something like, is that how that generally works?
Yeah, I think that's something we, I mean, I think it's a very fair point, I think, with this type of situation, we'd want to have some sort of contact with their, probably our emergency services would want to have some kind of contact that they can reach out and say, "Hey, there's an issue with the gate." So that's something we could kind of include, I think, in those discussions when they come in with the final designs for that site, but. We do get HOA documentation, the city doesn't necessarily a party to those, but we do try to keep track of that, in this case, probably, especially since there is kind of some special circumstances in this case. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the issue, either in favor or in opposition of the proposed rezoning? Please come forward. Say your name.
Good evening, council members. I'm Cody Dar. I am an engineer and land surveyor at Central Missouri Professional Services. Our offices are at 2500 East McCarty Street. Thank you, Director. That, pretty much, you, you hit a lot of the highlights on this. I'll just run down a few quick overview things, just to, just to kind of recap again. The owner, Farr J.C. Holdings, John Farr is the developer, he was unfortunately not able to make it tonight, but he, he was at the public hearing with, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So there would be a maximum 140 units or 70 buildings, there, it's going to be a mix of two and three bedroom, the elevations that were previously shown on the slides, one was a two-bedroom and one was a three-bedroom unit footprint. We're looking at probably around 2500 to 3500 square feet for each unit. So again, with the gated community, this is targeted for an upscale-type community, so it will match that in nature. There's a similar townhome, maybe not quite as upscale, but it's very similar feel in, on Georgetown Fairgrounds Road at the west end of Edgewood. So that would be a very similar type townhome development, and it would be similar to how we would be final planning and creating these townhome lots that would be available for individual purchase for each side, so, each unit. There will be, we will be addressing stormwater requirements to the city, to the city requirements for water quality and for retention. We have some basins shown on the layout. There will be a clubhouse with amenities, pickleball court, pool, it's kind of what developer and owner's thinking to include at this time for that. Mr. Smith already kind of went over the variances we were asking for. I can go into more detail on that if needed, but we will be, as far as the gates, we will have more detailed plans at the time of the final submission. And we have, actually, earlier this week, we did do our first submittal for this. It hasn't been reviewed by the city yet. That also included draft documents of the Articles of incorporation for the Homeowners Association and for the covenants and restrictions. association and for the covenants and restrictions that would match the language that the code requires. So although this is, although these roads will be private roads, the utilities will still be public, there still will be public easements, they'll have access, the utility companies, Ameren Electric, Ameren Gas, the Water District, all their stuff will be in the same locations as what you would expect in a typical residential neighborhood, they'll still have access to all those, it'll still be an easement dedicated for their use. So those are kind of the highlights I wanted to hit. I don't know if anybody had more specific things they wanted to talk about, but I know the owner is excited to get started on building these houses and provide this for the City of Jefferson.
Thank you. This is more about the detail of development. Does anybody have questions or?
Do we need to close the public hearing prior to council? I had a question, but do we need to close that public hearing prior to council questions? Or respond?
Yeah, we need to, we have specific questions about the development, I guess you could ask that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, you can tell me if it's specific, but I just wondered, in our subdivision code that allows 50 units per private street, is there a particular reason why that exists? And then do we often, I guess we don't have many private streets or any private streets, but do we have any other example where we've offered a variance to triple that, nearly triple, I guess, 50 to 140?
Yeah, so if I could respond, so I'm glad you'd mentioned that, that is something, I know there was a question about other private streets in town and we did go back and look. As far as a residential street, I think Strump Court off Ventura is technically a private street, but from staff's review, that looks like something we inherited when it was annexed in from the county. We do have a commercial private drive off Eastland, kind of the extension of Elm, which isn't quite what I consider a private street per se. So this is probably the best example really of what I would consider a private street through a PUD process. And there's really nothing quite similar to this, I think, right now in the city. We talked about the 50 unit limit, I think it did come up. Without, you know, being here when it passed, I think generally a lot of those requirements in there are really kind of trying to accomplish the same thing, which is kind of limit the scope so that we're not cutting off through access and connectivity to other developments that could occur in the future. So I think 50 is probably not a magic number, it's probably something that was decided, that's, that's the limit on how much we want to try to, you know, allow that where it might actually cut off that accessibility potential in the future. So this one, I think, you know, I think the case that was made that again, it's really budding up against to the, to the north, kind of that drop in the creeks, there's not a lot of potential there. So you're looking at a little bit to the south. So there's potential where, you know, connectivity here could be beneficial. And, you know, it's hard to say that it couldn't happen in the future, but we did look at those properties and they do have frontage on either Wildwood, on property, or the main road to the south and then to the north as well, if you're going to the west. So we made sure that there is that connectivity, so we're not completely islanding or cutting off access for those properties. But that's probably the reason for those requirements is to keep it kind of a limited scope.
Makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
If you'd mind who's speaking in favor of the development, please come forward. State your name.
Thank you. Scott Spencer, I was here in Jefferson City in the 3rd Ward. So tonight I'm speaking in favor of the PUD Wildwood Estates, PUD zoning preliminary plat. This is a very exciting project for our community as it's a first of its kind as far as it being a gated community, which I think is a uniqueness of the selling, potential selling of the project to buyers, potential buyers of properties. I think another key aspect to this that Cody did hit on and others as well is that this being privately, private drive, the private drive, private road, private streets owned by the developer, the HOA takes the burden and the responsibility of the city of maintaining those roads, which I think we all understand, especially of us that served on council, is the challenge of maintaining our city streets. And if we have a developer that's willing to maintain those on their dime, I think that's definitely an advantage to our community. So I'm just here tonight speaking and encouraging you all as elected officials to understand the challenges of what we face as far as housing across the city and just encourage you to vote on this preliminary plat tonight in favor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the development? So come please forward. Is there anybody else wanting to speak in favor? Seeing no further witnesses, the evidentiary portion of the public hearing is now concluded. I want to take up the bill number 2025006.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve bill 202500.
Discussion.
I'll second it.
I think she just said it.
If you heard me, I will second it.
Your call.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Hossleton.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young. Bill Passus, 90.
Thank you. Appointments, presentations, we have a presentation on annual audit. Ms. Perry?
So the annual audit for the City of Jefferson fiscal year 24 was completed a couple of months ago. We did produce that and it's posted to the website, but we have a representative today from Williams Keepers, who is the new audit firm that we switched to. This is the first year we've actually used Williams Keepers. And she's going to give you a brief update, brief presentation, the information is in your package.
Thank you. Your name?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Schultz. I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers. Our office here in Jeff City is located at 3220 West Edgewood. And as Sheila mentioned, this is the first time we've performed the audit of the city, at least for many years. But back in March, we did issue our audit reports for the financial statements covering the fiscal year that ended October 31st, 2024. So as Sheila mentioned, I am just going to go over our summary report that hits the highlights of all the individual reports we issued as a result of the audit, but I'm also happy to take questions at any time. So the first report that we issued is the audited financial statements themselves. That includes the financial statements again for the fiscal year that ended October 31st, 2024, along with our report on those financial statements. In our report, we issued unmodified or a clean opinion on those financial statements, meaning that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. That is the best opinion that you can get and it means that the users of the city's financial statements can rely upon them. Management is ultimately responsible for preparing and presenting the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, but it's a common practice for us as independent auditors to do so as part of the audit process. So we did prepare the financial statements, but they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued back in March. We use our judgment determining how to audit the city. That's not just a one-time thing, we'll continue performing that every year. At the interim or planning phase of the audit, we perform a risk assessment process by taking a look at balances, transactions, processes and internal controls to determine where we need to focus our attention, and that's usually on areas where the financial statements could be misstated. So really that means we did not audit everything. If we did, we'd still be out here performing our work, but we did enough work in order to be able to opine on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves include two different sets of financial statements, most governmental entities do. On pages 12 and 13 are the government-wide financial statements. Those are full accruals, they include all of the city's funds as well as any long-term asset and liability balances. And then there are fund financial statements that follow the government-wide financial statements that include significantly more detail on all the city's individual funds. So those are separated into governmental funds financial statements on pages 14 through 17, proprietary funds on pages 18 through 20, and fiduciary funds on 21 through 22. Moving on to page two of the summary report, there's a table at the top that summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements where again, everything is put together for this city. The financial statements that are audited themselves are not comparative, so only fiscal year 2024, the most recent fiscal year under audit is included. But this summarized table does include comparative information for 2023, as does a section in the audited financial statements titled "The Management's Discussion and Analysis." So that section is comparative, written by management, and does describe the changes in the various categories between these two years that are summarized here. So lots of good reading on pages four through 11 in that MTNA. We also performed a single audit as part of the financial statement audit this year. That's usually when a governmental entity or even a nonprofit, it spends more than $750,000 of federal grant expenditures, you're required to have a single audit performed in addition to the financial statement audit. So the city had federal expenditures of about $5.8 million for several different programs that are listed in the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards on pages 83 and 84 in those audited financial statements. We issued two additional reports as a result of that single audit. The first is on pages 78 and 79, it's on internal control and compliance related to financial reporting and it's not report any material weaknesses and no instances of non-compliance. And the other single audit report is on pages 80 through 82, it's on internal control and compliance related to major federal programs, for which there were two this year, the CDBG federal grant program and the federal transit cluster. And that report expressed an unmodified or again, a clean opinion on compliance with those programs and did not have any findings. So two clean reports coming out of the single audit as well. The next, and I believe, yeah, final audit report that we issued is our auditor's communication letter. And essentially, we are required by our professional standards to communicate the information that's included in that letter to those charged with governance. It's kind of the update or summary of how the audit went. So just a few highlights, we didn't note any transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, and there were no changes in accounting policies that applied to the city this year, so nothing was required to be accounted for or reported differently in this year's financial statements. It does note in the summary report that there was one governmental accounting standards board, or GASB, statement. GASB is the entity that sets basically governmental accounting standards for entities like the city. Statement 100 on accounting changes and error corrections was implemented by the city during the year. It really just changed some terminology or language throughout the financial statements if there were any restatements, which there were a few this year as a result of us being first-time auditors for the city, but it didn't significantly change anything else throughout the reports. But there will be GASB statements 101 on compensated absences and 102 on certain risk disclosures that'll be effective and will need to be implemented by the city for next year's audit, fiscal year 2025. We are expecting that governmental accounting standards board statement 100 or 101, excuse me, on compensated absences is going to have a pretty significant impact on the compensated absences liabilities for the city. As part of our audit, we did take a look at accounting estimates, we also looked at financial statement disclosures, noting that all the estimates were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole and that all of the disclosures required to support amounts in the financial statements were included in the notes to those financial statements. We found the accounting records to be in good order, we did propose a few adjustments, that's pretty typical as part of our audit procedures. We didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, no difficulties in performing our audit, even though it was a first-year audit, like I've mentioned a few times, it was overall very smooth. So many thanks to Sheila and Shelby for all the assistance and cooperation they provided us this year. Sometimes we'll issue a separate management letter on internal control if we identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. We actually did not for the city, so we just conclude our auditor's communication letter with a section on internal control. I just wanted to clarify that a financial statement audit, even one that includes a single audit, does not include an opinion on internal controls, so we really just perform some limited procedures. And if there was anything significant or certainly material enough to bring to the city council's attention, we would have reported it in a separate management letter. During the audit process, we would have discussed best practice type recommendations with Sheila and Shelby and their team, but nothing was significant or again, material enough to be reported to the city council as far as internal control concerns. Any questions about the summary report specifically or the audit process in general, anything I can answer?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
I have a budgeting 101 question.
Okay.
Total deferred outflows and total deferred inflows of resources, what are those?
Yes, that's new terminology under GASB 65. That was a fun one to implement, but it's essentially terminology that covers for deferred outflows of resources, that's essentially like a prepaid expense. So it's something that's sitting as an asset at the end of, in your last case, October 31st, 2024, that will be incurred as an expense and run through your funds income statements in the future. So kind of a timing type situation, and then the opposite deferred inflows of resources are kind of like a deferred revenue. And certain things, you know, fall in both of these categories. So if you have deferred revenue at a certain point in time, those are items that will be recognized as revenues in the future.
Got it. And then I just really want to make a statement thanking Sheila and company for coming out with a nice, clean bill of health, that's an accomplishment, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the City of Jefferson and see you next year. Okay, thank you all.
Okay. Any announcements, first of all, the council committees, administration?
Thank you, because I know I wrote it down, June 4th, across the hall, roughly at 4:00 PM, again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. We will not have a meeting this week, but we'll look forward to having one next month, same time, same day.
Next meeting will be Thursday, May 29th, at 3:30 in the police training room.
Okay, and Public Works will be next month, Thursday, June 12th, at 7:30 here in Council chambers. Okay, and other announcements, I think we do from Mr. Ermer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. This week is National Public Works Week and tomorrow, we're having a great celebration down at our Hyde Park facility between obviously the city public works, city parks and recreation staff and the county public work staff. And it's going to be, it's going to be, start out with a lot of fun with an equipment rodeo starting at about nine o'clock. We'll see what the weather does to us as it approaches here, maybe give it pushed back a little bit in the morning, but we're hoping it clears out. But regardless, we'll have a nice barbecue no matter what and a good fun day for all our public works staff and probably some good banter back and forth between county, city public works, city parks and recreations as that rodeo goes on too. So be a good day to collaborate and just have a good day overall to celebrate all our, all our staff, you know, it's, it's, those guys and ladies do amazing work from streets to parks to parks and recreations, transit, airport, central maintenance, engineering, wastewater collections, wastewater plant, stormwater activities, it's just a lot encompassed in that. So a well-deserved day for, for all that, all those folks and a lot of fun. So if you've got time, come down and join us, we're going to eat around noon and then around 11:30, 11:45, we're going to celebrate some, some folks that have put a lot, lot of time in for us recently. We've had, had some retirements, Brett Smith. Brett Smith, who everybody knows, put a ton of time in public works operations. Obviously, Russ Rackers, who was our street division supervisor for years. I think Matt Marash is going to join us. And then we'll also celebrate my counterpart over at the county, Eric Landware, who's received a national top-10 Public Works Leader Award. So, an amazing award that we'll get to celebrate tomorrow with him and some of his family and friends that come in for that. So, be a great day tomorrow.
Sounds fantastic, yes.
You mentioned an equipment rodeo as well.
Yes. So, one of the fun things that we're doing is equipment rodeo. And so, what that's going to entail is we'll have an excavator, skid steer, a truck and trailer, and then we're kind of doing a construction project. And so, each of those divisions, so wastewater, our street division, county public works, and parks and recreations, we drew out of a hat which event each would plan. And so, like, street department has the excavator. They drew out of a hat an excavator, and they've got to come up with a competition with an excavator, and it'll be judged. And then, same thing with truck and trailer, parks and recreations, Aaron's folks are bringing that event. So, they'll kind of have the inside ballgame, if you will, on that particular event, but they won't on the other three. So, it'll be, it'll be some fun, friendly competition.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman Lester. I just want to take a moment and say that we're thinking about our friends and family throughout the state, particularly in St. Louis, who were impacted by severe weather this week. I know here at the City of Jefferson, we have people who have family members and friends who were actually impacted. And so, you know, certainly, probably, and speak for my colleagues when I say, you know, the city is thinking of our community and the state.
Mr. Allers?
Thank you, Colley. You all do fantastic work in the city, but I think everybody wants to know what are you grilling? Because we never get food here at all.
Most important question?
It'll be mostly burgers, brats, hot dogs.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, everyone.
Okay. Other announcements?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that we do have the River Market groundbreaking this week, Thursday at 3:00 p.m. So, if you have the opportunity to come down and see this kind of extremely exciting project, it's been kind of a long time working on this to bring something to this site. And now, I think it's kind of the beginning of the phase where we start to see something coming out of the ground. So, we're very excited about that coming up at 3:00. Like staff said, maybe wear some good shoes in case we get more rain, so it is still a construction site, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it. Any other announcements? If not, move to the agenda?
So, move. Thank you.
Allen in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No bills introduced? Bills pending, 2025-05?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a reimbursable agreement with FAA for fiber optic installation of the new control tower.
Emma?
Yes, as you all are aware, we're building a new traffic control tower at our airport. It is a 95% funded project. This item is communications to that tower. The FAA controls communications in that tower, and so, this is an agreement to make sure that they can communicate.
Questions? Questions? Your call?
Allen?
Aye.
Aye.
We're voting. I'm trying to redo all this stuff.
We are voting, just the wrong person.
Allen?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Poselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young. Bill passes.
Okay, 2025-06 has already been taken up, 2025-07?
In ordinance permitting Chapter 2, Administration of the Code of the Jefferson Missouri by updating the design of the city flag.
Okay, Ms. Frye?
Councilman Lester, yeah, this reflects the presentation I gave last week with Nicholas Preyers and our graphic design contest to design the city's new flag, updated the language to reflect that design.
Curious. Discussion comments made for roll call?
Poselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young? Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Bill passes.
And 2025-09?
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Designating 309 West Hess Way as a local historic landmark.
Yes, Mr. Spur?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, this bill would confirm landmark status on 309 West Hess Way. We did have the property owner here at the last meeting give a more detailed overview of that site. I see a lot of the really interesting background and pictures of that site. There is a landmark plaque that will be given out to that owner, and we have it here tonight for viewing. And we'd be happy to answer any questions on that. And HPC, I should say, did review this request and did vote in favor of the landmark award nomination. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
The owner is here. If anybody had any further questions, I didn't want to recognize errors.
Okay, ready for roll call?
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Aye.
Poselton?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mead?
Thank you, Councilman. Would it be okay to get a photo with?
Yes. We've got to do that. Would you like to come up and, and, yes?
It's my game.
Oh, you're putting hard work. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Nothing on informal calendar, no resolutions, new business?
I was just going to, in thinking about kind of the duration of the properties that we acquired locally from Ms. Buescher and how there's a large volume and they're in many different spots as terms of the phase. I think, at least for me, a regular update on these properties would be helpful. I know when I came down with 401, you know, there were 401 capital, is what I'm referencing. There were some things I missed in that, you know, wish I could have maybe said something sooner or did something differently as a representative and having that in my ward and that piece of history. And so, I would just ask tonight, make a motion that we receive a maybe a monthly would be appropriate, not necessarily the properties that are closed, but the properties that have not yet left the city's hands.
You're speaking of the properties that are still, no developments happening, and which properties, or all the properties?
The properties that are still city-owned. So, any city-owned property that we have not yet transferred the bill of sale.
I guess there's three, or how many?
No, it's a larger number. It's probably, well, it's a, let me group closings, probably three or four different closings that'd be a tally of that.
Yes, Ms. Allen, do you want to speak?
Thank you. I, hopefully, you all can hear me, but I support what Councilman Neely is asking. I didn't hear how frequently he asked for it, but I would be happy to second that.
Yes, Allers?
I just have an accorded, Aaron, it's about the, if the sale, going through, the title work's all been done, the transfer happens, or you just want to know where that had to process?
Yeah, the, an update on any property that we still own.
That hasn't been gone through process.
By "we," I mean the city still owns, yes.
And so, the motion is for a monthly update, and Council Me, what's?
Yeah, I don't know if Counselwoman Allen heard, but I, my motion was to have a frequency of monthly, so I don't know how that would sound to the council. I don't want to certainly overburden anyone, but at the same time, kind of keep up on what's happened.
Further discussion, is staff want to make in comment about that?
Just want to clarify, so I sent out a report this afternoon, the anticipation that it would probably look fairly similar. And so, I think this is probably a piece of business that is most effectively and concisely handled with a written communication as opposed to putting on a presentation at the council level, so.
A written report each month, is that?
It was easily digestible and helpful to most people from whatever the council wants to do.
That was my intent with the motion. I should have stated that, so thank you, Mr. Molyneux. A written report would certainly work.
Any other, any other discussions?
I think, you know, it'd be probably the appropriate places for Public Works and Planning to review those reports. We try to operate out of a committee structure, and that's typically, you know, that's when staff gives those types of reports, but if the council wants to see that report at a monthly meeting, they can do that as well.
I would just suggest a written report sent to council, and then if Mr. Grant, you know, staff wanted to do a presentation beyond a written report, then certainly the committee set up would be fine.
Okay. So, written report monthly, just sent to council, and then?
Until they close.
Pardon, until they close? Until they close and then taken off the list.
I think, did Julia have another question?
Ms. Allen?
No, I just, I'm sorry. I agree that I think a report to council is appropriate if we want to do something in planning, PWMP, I think that's great, but I think the whole council has, likely has an interest in those properties.
Okay. Motion is on table. Any questions or further discussion? Roll call?
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young? Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Poselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Unfinished business? I'll, Carol, now, just like?
I can read it.
Oh, okay.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public session pursuant to Section 610 021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, going to close session to discuss the following: operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans developed, adopted, or maintained by any public agency, Section 610 021 subsection 18 subsection 18.
Seconded, look good, Mr. Trump, sorry.
Yeah. Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young? Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Poselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?